Yeah, speak close to the microphone and switch their microphones off after they've made their contributions. I would like to also welcome officers presenting today who are participating live via Microsoft Teams. Can I ask that you introduce yourselves at the beginning of your item or when you make a contribution? To ask questions or contribute during the meeting, please raise your hand virtually or type speak in the chat function. Requested speak will be collated by the Vice Chairman and councillor Parry Tom Williams. Please can you keep your questions and contributions succinct and concise? Can I remind everybody to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent? We will now move on with the formal agenda. Apologies for absence and replacement members, Emily, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We received apologies from councillor Cook.
Thank you. Declarations of members' interests, do any members wish to declare any interest? Obviously, you can do that as we come to an item that you realise you have. Item three, minutes of the meeting of the panel on the ninth of September 2021. This item is to confirm the minutes of our previous meeting held on the ninth of September 2021, pages three to 10 of the agenda pack as a correct record. Can I ask for a proposer and a seconder, please? Councillor Whittitown proposed. Thank you, councillor Matthews is seconded and all those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. I think that was everybody, wasn't it? Yes, so there's none against and there's no abstentions. Thank you, those minutes are agreed as a correct record. Item four, announcement by the chairman, executive councillor and lead officers. So if I might, I'll just kick off with one or two bets. I attended the corporate parent training the other day, which... Hello, I can hear myself now. I thought it was a very good event, I thought it was well attended. I thought the councillors that were on it were interested. It went on probably three quarters of an hour longer than what Andrew Morris thought it would do. And there was quite a few of the new councillors there, so that was a good event. I also attended the fostering awards. I can't remember, it was earlier in this month, and it blew me away. Some of the stories of foster parents was just fantastic. I did joke about the couple who had been fostering for 30 years, that they were given a present of twins. And I wondered if everybody got twins at 30 years. They looked happy, they got big smiles on their face. Just a superb event and I was so pleased to be invited to go to that. I also attended the big conversation. And again, it's all new to me and another super event. The, I call them children, children, young adults were involved, they were engaged. They said what they thought. There was a group called the Young Inspectors. And we've invited them to either come and have a go at us here or go to the Children's Scrutiny Committee with Rob Kendrick. And we've left it to them, they can come to both or they can come to one or the other. But only if they're coming to challenge us. We don't want them to come just to roll off nothing. We want to be challenged and I'm sure that's going to happen. And that's it for me. The executive councillor, councillor Mrs Bradwell's not here. And Janice, do we have anything?
Is it working? Is it on? Oh, it couldn't quite work out. Yes, thank you Chair. I just really wanted to have a little bit of a conversation about representation from Voices for Choices. That's our children in care council. And we have in the past have a member attend this meeting. I think it wasn't probably the best way of engaging young people in the work that we do here because obviously there's a lot of very intense reporting. And I just wondered whether it might be worth asking Ben to have a conversation with the young people, the representatives of the children in care council about how they'd like future engagement going forward. I do feel that we are lacking that connection at the moment, that's understandable. We've had a pandemic. Amy, who used to be the young woman who came to these meetings, is no longer. She's an adult now and she's doing very well with her life, which I'm really pleased to report. So if you're okay with that as a proposal, I'll task Ben with the conversation and then he will feed back the... Yeah, is that...
Yeah, I just take... I presume members, we have no problem with that. Yeah, the best way they can represent themselves is good for me. Yeah, thank you. Are we there? Yes, that's it, Janet.
Just one other thing. We've had the inspectors in our children's homes. And I'm pleased to report that the beacon was... Rachel's trying to give me an eyeball there. And the beacon was recently inspected and maintained its good judgment, which we're really pleased about. And they were instructed this week and we're not allowed to report the judgment, but we're very pleased with the outcome, is all I will say.
Okay, are you there, Janice?
And the other bit of good news is that the DFE, we put a proposal in in 2018 around building a bigger secure estate. So the secure unit at Sleaford is, for those of you who've been, kind of, it's a really nice unit, but it's kind of a bit beyond its sell-by date. And we put a proposal in to kind of expand that and open it up to be a 24-bedded unit. Unfortunately, it wasn't accepted at that point in time, but the DFE have now accepted our proposal and they've given us permission to progress to the first part of the procurement and that is to go through to the planning stage. We're fairly confident with the feedback that we've had from them that hopefully it will come to fruition this time. So that will be a really exciting investment opportunity and it will increase welfare beds for young people across the country, which is a really good thing. And I am...
Thank you. I mean, that is good news. That was one of my first visits and it's an impressive place. So how it's going to do in a more modern, larger unit has got to be good news. Something I did actually forget, and Kiara will turn me off. Visiting members' training is scheduled for the 26th of November, but we are having an additional day on the 2nd December for members who can't attend. Item five, independent reviewing service, six-month report, 1st of April to the 30th of September. This item is on page 11 to 36 of the agenda pack and introduces the six-month report on the independent chairs service. The report will be presented by Carolyn Knight, Head of Service, Quality and Standards and Principal Social Worker, who is attending by teams. Sorry. Yes. Hello. Not attending by teams. And we'll take questions at the end of the report. Karen, thank you.
Okay, good morning, everybody. So as you may be aware, the independent reviewing service sits within quality and standards because it has to be line managed separately and more independently from the frontline service, children's social care teams. So it's a requirement in law to have an independent reviewing officer, who I'll refer to as an IRO just for ease of terminology. And they have a number of functions, which include monitoring the performance of the local authority in relation to the child and corporate parenting responsibilities, to ensure that the voice of the child is captured throughout the child's time in care and also to ensure that any plans that are made for the child, that they are based on thorough and evidence-based assessments. Within our service area, the way the team is structured, the independent chairs have a dual role. So they take on the role of the IRO, which relates to children in care, but they also take on the role of independent chairs who chair child protection conferences. And in addition, they also do short-term breaks. So in the report, you'll see that all those roles are covered. Because if it just reported on IRO work, you might wonder why we have so many and what they do the rest of the time when they're not dealing with the children in care. So you'll see from the report that there were a number of priorities we were working on this year. Obviously, for everybody, Covid introduced a very different way to how we worked. And initially, all meetings went virtual. And that still, to be fair, is the way the majority of the meetings continue to be managed. So we are, we have started to move to more physical meetings. For children in care, they have a choice about how they want their meeting to be held. Virtual's been well received by some young people who've attended their reviews for the first time during this period. But for child protection conferences, we are looking at moving back to physical meetings from January for the core group of people that are involved with the children and families. So that's taken quite a bit of work this year about looking at what meetings might look like going forward. We didn't want to lose some really positive feedback from parents and young people about the ability to join remotely because some people feel a lot more comfortable with that than turning up to a meeting with a number of professionals in the room. So that's been a big piece of work. We're also working on collating feedback better because although we do gather in, and as a council and children's services, we gather in quite a lot of information and feedback from children and families at various points throughout their time that they are involved with us. We're not always the best at using that in any strategic way. So we gather it quite child specifically about their care plan or their child protection plan and their voice and what they think they'd like to see. And we manage that really, really well, but we don't always collate it and manage it strategically in terms of developing the service. So we're looking at what that might look like. We've also introduced the pre-birth protocol, which means that we've reduced the need for some parents who potentially are looking at care proceedings when their child is born. They enter a process called pre-proceedings. And also at the same time, the expectation was that they might go through a child protection process as well. So to reduce the impact of that on the parents, we've introduced a new pre-birth protocol. So if the family are looking, going into pre-proceedings, they don't then have to have a child protection conference as well. So that reduces expectations on the parents. Other work has included work around sexual abuse, which came about due to numbers of, low numbers of children on a plan, which you might think might be a good thing, but it was very low compared with other counties around the UK. And as a result, we have the opportunity to make a bid to the Centre of Excellence for Child Sexual Abuse. And this has been successful. So we are, we've just embarked on a piece of work with the What Works Well Centre for Child Sexual Abuse in conjunction with the Safeguarding Board to develop a sexual abuse pathway, which will pull together quite a lot of work that we already do, but in a more coherent and strategic way. And we've also looked at identifying gaps in provision, which we can then, along with partners, look at how we could address. We continue, our focus this year really has been to challenge parents who are absent at child protection conferences particularly, but also in child in care reviews. And we'd already started to do a piece of work about numbers of fathers that don't attend conferences and the fact that then there's a, the pressure and the focus then becomes on the mother of children. And there's been some recent research, that you may or may not have seen, about fathers and how young children in this study have actually been severely abused or even died at the hands of men. And on the whole, it was fathers, which has then led to questions about how fathers are engaged in the process from when the child, when the pair, when the mother's pregnant, then when the child's born, the mother will be focused through midwifery and health visiting. But actually, what do we do about engaging those fathers? And is there more we could do to prevent children being significantly harmed at the hands of these fathers? So that's a big piece of work we're about to embark on, which will be really interesting. Within the service, we've completed a restructure, which has meant that the Laddos now have a separate team manager and that means there is more management capacity across the independent chairs and the IROs. I'm pleased to report that performance has remained consistently high across the service, which has not been without its challenges with Covid and IT. But, you know, we've managed to keep performance up high. There's quite a lot of data in the report, which I don't intend to go through, but I'm happy to take questions on if people want to ask questions. And we've also tried to focus on positive feedback. You'll see the escalations, formal escalations tend to be quite low, both for children in care and for child protection cases. And I like to think that's because we're having the right conversation at the right time, early in the process. So we're actually addressing issues as they arise before it becomes a significant concern. And that's why you might think, see the numbers and think, oh, they're not very high. But that's why, because it's about trying to be restorative and address these issues. And I think that's all I've got to say, Chair. If... Happy to take any questions. Chair, if there, happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No. Go on, Mark, was that something?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't so much a question, but really just a, a general comment about sort of thanks for a very comprehensive report. I'm really pleased to see that, you know, post-Covid, there's some sort of face-to-face meetings are coming back, but also that the facility exists for those people who feel more comfortable attending virtually, to attend virtually, because I think, hopefully, one, if, if there's any good things to come out fro- fro- from the pandemic, it was around some of these new ways of working and, you know, that, that might actually help some people who may struggle face-to-face, you know, to actually attend a lot more. So, you know, obviously, obviously Covid's been, pandemic has been really, really challenging. But I think in certain areas that there has, there has been some sort of chance of experiment and whatever, and hopefully improve things going forward. In terms of fathers attending, I, I think that, I, I, I think, I think, I think, do think that is, that is a real challenge for you, because, because as you say, there's all sorts of mothers, children, you know, there is that sort of, I, I don't know how you build that. We encourage fathers to develop that, that stronger link with their children, because I think that's really, really important, because, because, you know, potentially, it was, I don't know if it's the way of, the way things, mothers always seem to have this, tend to be a lot closer in, in the, especially in the early stages of a child's life. But I, I just, just, Caroline, sort of got any, or the, or the team have got sort of any comments really about how, how you can encourage fathers to become a lot more involved, you know, you know, you know, in their children? Because I think, I think, I think all the sort of stats you see sort of indicate that children do better in families where there are two parents present. So, you know, just, you know, Caroline.
Shall I come back on that?
How do we sort it in?
It, I, I can't say we've got any magic answers, to be honest. I think we just felt that we tend to just let meetings happen and mothers often there, and we're not necessarily that proactive about trying to engage the fathers. So it may be that we just have to make a bit more effort to try and track them down and call them and not just accept that dad never attends. So be more, more proactive really. But I think it might be a whole cultural shift as well, because when we, we do, also doing a piece of work around fathers in care proceedings, and whilst we know about mothers who have several children removed, what's interesting from the statistics we've got is that actually some of the fathers have had more than one child removed, not necessarily with the same mother, but we've not been as proactive so, managing them. So we've got the time project for women who've had recurrent care proceedings, but we don't offer anything for men. So I think there's, there's quite a lot of work we can do really, but just starting to acknowledge it, unpick it, look at the research, and then we need to perhaps get together with partner agencies and look at what we can do really. But it's very, it's early stages, but we've, we're, we're aware of the issue and any thought for help? Or any suggestions gratefully received as to how we can move that forward?
Well, well, s- soon enough from the experience, when, when we went through the adoption process with our son, sort of eighteen years ago now. Yes, our house, house, our, our son's earth mother had had six children with three different fathers. But we know that the father of, sort of, so to say, the natural father of our adopted son and his older brother had had children from several relationships, and, and some of those other children have been taken to care, also took care proceedings. So, but, 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 but as you say, it, it, it's often because the children are living with the mother and the father's not there. But the reality is, is the father may very well, as you say, have had children in several different relationships, all of whom potentially are subject to care proceedings. And I, I guess it's a question of sort of trying to identify the fathers and, and, and attempting, attempting to sort of focus in on them. Thanks, thanks, just chair.
Thank you. councillor Matthews.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Caroline, Caroline, for a good report. I, I've had, through my direct family, some experience of this, of dads and daughters and mums. And the system at the moment is set against the men. And, and that's right and proper, because it's been established to protect the women. But often, that protection has been abused because of the ability to draw down legal aid, for instance, by claiming abuse when none might happen. And I'm really pleased that we're looking at how you can engage men, because I think there, there are some wicked people out there, but also I think the system is flawed against the men who, who probably are deeply emotionally involved with these things, but, but are excluded by process. So I'm really pleased with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. councillor Hayes.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the report. My question is, if it's difficult to get parent, the parents involved in the discussions, do we move on to Plan B and try the greater, the extended family with the grandparents and, and other elder siblings? Thank you.
The, the short answer is yes. We do, particularly for children, well, for all children really, but for children in care, there is a legal duty. If you can't, if the child cannot, for whatever reason, stay with mum or with dad, there is a legal duty to explore and look to place the child within the family. And we know that children do best when they are brought up within the family, and that does include extended family. So yes, we've had family members from far-flung places of the world really, particularly, you know, with, with immigration and families coming from abroad. We, we've been fortunate to be able to place some children back with families at quite a distance. But yes, that is, we exhaust that before we would look to be keeping children in long-term care or having them adopted. That would definitely be a priority.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment or question? No, okay. At the last meeting, I, I made a comment about virtual meetings not being done because they were easier, and this sounds like a, a good example of where the whole process is enhanced because we have virtual, and I'm pleased to see it happening. The panel is invited to consider and comment on the six-month report and endorse the priorities, which we have done. I propose that the panel receives and endorses the report and that the comments as recorded are taken under consideration. Can I ask you to raise your hand if you are in agreement? Okay, thank you very much, then, then that's agreed. Item six, Regulation forty-four Independent Visiting Service Report, first of April to the thirtieth of September twenty one, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. This item, on pages thirty-seven to fifty-four of the pack, introduces a six-month report on the inspection of the local authority children's homes by independent visitors, and this report will also be presented by Caroline Knight physically.
Thank you, yes. This is the last one from me though, so you're not going to put up with me too much longer. Okay, so Regulation forty-four, it's a statutory requirement to have an independent visitors, and the independent visitors are based in my service area, and their role and responsibility is to visit all our own so that the local authority owned and managed residential homes every month and produce a report against the quality standards which are detailed in your report. These reports are then shared with the home, the home's manager, Janice gets a copy, and also they go to Ofsted, so that they're, you know, quite active reports in that they, they are well scrutinized. So the report before you today covers the period April to the end of October, or end of September, actually. Visits have been in person in this, during this time, but we've obviously continued to maintain secure Covid practices. I don't know if you can hear, I can keep talking, I didn't know if you could hear me over it. No problem, thank you. I've forgotten where I was now. Okay, yes, so, so there has, we've had a change of personnel with the Reg forty-fours, and also there's been some changes in relation to the management of some of the homes. But overall, there's a really good relationship between the Reg forty-four inspectors and the managers, and we try and look on it as a critical friend really. So, you know, whilst we are inspecting and we've got to address these quality standards, we do try to be quite proactive in addressing any issues as they arise with the managers of the homes, and, and usually our recommendations, suggestions are well-received by the managers. So there's been no escalations during this period, which is positive. You'll see from the report, one of the quality standards, and a lot of the work the homes do, is about getting the voice of the child. And again, because of Covid, there's been an increase in the use of technology with young people in the homes to maintain contact with family and with other professionals. And the independent advocates are now visiting the homes again. And the independent advocate visit regularly, and they, they speak to all the young people in the home, or they're offered to speak to the young people in the home, and they are there to address any issues and concerns from a very independent perspective in that they're not a member of the local authority. And you'll see from the report that our homes do an excellent job of obtaining the voice of the child, and the disability homes, have to say, are brilliant and really creative in all the work they do with young people to obtain their voices, really. Some excellent stuff comes out, and there's details of things that have been offered in the meeting, in the report, sorry. So the quality of the care across all our children's homes is good, and in some cases, excellent and outstanding, although it's continued to be a challenging time for Albion Street, but there is a robust action plan in place which is going well. Recruitment continues to be a challenge for, well, I think for a lot of agencies, but particularly for the residential establishments. You know, there's a number of private children's homes in Lincolnshire, we've got several homes, we're pulling from the same group cohort of individuals. So recruitment's been a challenge for a while and continues to be a challenge. But having said that, the homes do do a brilliant job, and the gaps and the vacancies that exist in the home are well-covered with existing members of staff or consistent agency staff. So it's not impacting on the young people that are in our care and placed in these units. We, multi-agency working around the homes and the young people in the home remains a strength throughout all the homes. And you'll also see in the report that there's a range of activities that the homes put on, which are very wide and varied. And you'll note that in the secure unit, where young people can't, obviously, on the whole, go out, some are obviously on mobility, but on the whole, they're, they're, they're not allowed out. They are very creative about activities coming in, and it included a visit in this period from reptiles, which I can't say did a lot for me, but I'm sure the young people might have got something out of that. But it, the point is that there's a lot on offer and they are really creative. Social pedagogy and restorative practice continues to be developed, and there's clear impact throughout the report and throughout all the Reg forty-four reports of the impact of the work on the young people. And I think that's all I've got to say, Chair, but I'm happy to take questions if there are any on the report.
councillor Whittington.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My apologies again, I forgot I had that phone with me, it's deep in, deep in my bag, apologies, sorry for that. Question really, it's, it's a really great, great report again, Caroline, it's really, really good to see the quality of care. Care is, is outstanding. One question I, I've got, which is, which is, because today's a deadline, certainly for adult social care, for staff peeping care homes to be double vaccinated, and if they're not, well, well, the regulations say they, their contracts will go, so potentially there could be sixty thousand adult care workers a day who may not be double vaccinated. What's our take in our children's homes on double vaccinations? Do we insist on our staff having them, and all the remaining staff who potentially may not have them? Because I'm wondering, that could be another pressure around, around staffing issues. And then allied around that, what can we do, you know, because obviously recruitment, because, you know, we've got, we've got situations now where we're reading all the time in so many different fields, especially around the care sector, you know, post-Covid, post-Brexit, there, there are issues around staffing. And you've got the situation now where Amazon, for instance, just opened a new warehouse in Mansfield, some of those, they're paying some people fifteen, sixteen pounds an hour with a three thousand pound bonus. I'm just wondering, it's going to be a real pressure for the public sector to kind of compete with us, I'm just wondering, just, just, just a few, a little bit around that thing, thing for you, so, thank you.
Chair, I wonder if I might respond to those. With regards to the vaccinations, the county council haven't got a policy at this point in time around whether we will enforce that for our children's homes. What I would say is the uptake of all our children's social care staff has been really robust, and we have included our foster carers in that. So the whole of the social care workforce in children's have had their double vaccinations. There will be some isolated staff, and the, we will respond to those on an individual basis, but at this point in time, the council hasn't said categorically that, you know, we will kind of terminate people's contracts. So whether that will come or not, I'm not sure, councillor Whittington, but at this point in time, that isn't, that isn't the way forward. What we're doing is working, working with staff to kind of encourage them and support them to have them. There's nothing been put on my radar that there's actually a widespread issue with that, so hopefully that will give you some reassurance. With regards to recruitment, absolutely, it's a challenge all round, it's a challenge in many parts of the public sector, as you know. What Rachel and I've done is very much look at a grow-your-own. So we've just kind of, we're just piloting a new approach where we're looking at an apprentice homes manager. So it's somebody that works with us, that we can support to develop them to reach the standards they need to be a homes manager, and I think that will be quite successful. And it's something that we're exploring for the other children's homes that we are opening over the next few years. So it is constantly a challenge. I think we've spoken about actually young people being more actively involved in the recruitment, so kind of writing the adverts, so area of ongoing, looking at how we might be more creative and innovative. And it's not necessarily just about money. You know, we do, you know, we offer a good salary, we offer good annual leave, you know, there's good training and development opportunities. I think post-pandemic, lots of people are reconsidering their lifestyles. So it's something we constantly work with, and touch wood today, the homes are managing. We haven't, we haven't got any significant shortfalls in staffing, although we constantly have areas where we do need to recruit, if that answers your question. Thank you.
councillor Hague.
Thank you, thank you. One observation and, and one question, if, if I may. The observation is that I'm always particularly interested in, in Eastgate Sleaford, because I, it seems like a long time ago when I went to, when I went there last time, but I'm always impressed with all the staff that I meet there. And looking at the, the activities that Eastgate have done, I know that Jim has been involved in a lot of that, and his energies with the children are always to be appraised because he does an excellent job with them. The other question, or, the question I got to ask was, you've mentioned that we're short, but, uh, uh, short of staff. I just wonder, with each centre, how the, the number of people that I just wonder with each centre, how the number of people that we're short on, on each centre? Thank you.
When we say short, we are short and the shortages vary across the homes. And I couldn't quite give you, Strut, for example, are currently experiencing a bit more of a challenge than they have recently. So they have more staff vacancies. What we have though is a lot of relief staff. So we have trained and supported relief staff so we can redeploy staff into the children's home. When we talk about shortage of staff, we're talking about one or two in each home. So we're not talking significant, other than Strut at this point in time, which I think has probably got four or five vacancies currently. So there is a big campaign for Strut. But with regards to all the other homes, it's just natural progression, staff leaving because they're retired, staff moving on to other parts of the service by promotion. So it's just something that we see ongoing in all parts of the homes and actually in all parts of children's services. So I'm not overly concerned if that gives you some reassurance. Although I might be at some point in the future.
councillor Matthews.
Hi, thanks for the good report. Is it possible for you to tell us about Albion Street? Without going into any specific detail, because it's the one thing that doesn't look good in that report. Thanks very much.
Yes, councillor Matthews. Albion Street's had some challenges over the last couple of years and that has been around staffing predominantly. We have struggled to recruit a homes manager, which has created instability in the staffing structure. And we've had some complex and challenging children there that we've had over time to review what we call our statement of purpose. So we've got a number of the older teenagers grouped together that the matching just wasn't, wasn't working. So we've had to look at how we can move those young people on. And we've reduced the age range for the young people that will now be placed there. We have recently transferred one of our very experienced homes managers over to Albion Street, which has brought stability to the staff group. And we have, the home that I was referring to about our apprentice homes manager is Albion Street. So we will be over established for a period of time with the experienced homes manager and the apprentice homes manager while we upskill the apprentice homes manager. And when I talk about apprentice homes manager, I'm talking about a very, very experienced member of staff who we are fast-tracking to become the homes manager. Albion Street is very stable at the moment, the staff group, we've done a lot of work with them. We've had a lot of resources going in that's worked with them on restorative relationship building, social pedagogy, signs of safety. We, Rachel and I received an email just yesterday from a member of staff who'd visited. We'd brought a young person from out of county residential, it's only been there a week and absolutely is flourishing and thriving, very challenging. And she described the unit as unrecognisable, it was warm, it was inviting, the children were engaging, the staff were engaging. So I'm fairly confident that we're on the right road with Albion Street. But it has been quite, it's quite, been quite a journey. And it's took a lot of resilience to get us to where we are. But I'm fairly confident now that we've turned that corner and we will hopefully see a good outcome in our next inspection.
That's good news, well done. Can you just explain a bit more about changing the age range and whether that's had a knock-on effect? If we've had to take our children and place them somewhere else or if they've left the system? And what I'm concerned about is if they had established a culture within that home that was not a good home and they've gone somewhere else. Might that be seeding problems in other places?
That's a very, very valid question. What we've had to look at is the individual needs of the children that were there at the time. And what we've done is identified placements that would meet those needs individually better. So we haven't displaced any young people, we've kind of looked at them and we've reviewed their care plans. And we have returned them to, sorry, not returned, placed them in other residential provision. And we have seen over the course of the pandemic, an increase in our young, very young children that have been placed in out-of-county residential provision. And we've made a conscious decision to bring those young people back. So I think the young man that I'm referring to, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, is he only ten? Nine? Nine. So we're looking at a much younger cohort. Because for those young children, if we can stabilise and regulate their emotions and work with them, we have a better chance of getting them to go and live in a family environment. So either with a foster carers or maybe back to a relative, or in some situations, maybe even back to their parents. So yes, sadly, a number of the older teenagers, we have moved into other provision. But that provision's been designed to meet their needs. And we have now worked to bring our younger children back into our children's homes. Because we believe that, you know, we want our younger children nearer their communities where we can do the work with them we need to do and hopefully transition them back into a family. Does that answer your question?
It does, but I want to be very specific. We haven't just moved the problem that was in Albion Street into other, no. Everything you said made absolute perfect sense. But it was suggesting that there was a core that had got some deep-seated personal issues and we haven't moved them to other places where they could then, no, that's good, thank you.
councillor Whittington.
Yes, thanks, Mrs Jenner, thanks for letting me to come back. Obviously, this report, really good, concerns our own homes that were under the ambit of the county council. One thing that certainly I'm very much aware of, by talking to colleagues on the planning committee at South Castrated even, is the increasing number of independent small children's homes that are kind of being set up. In my own division, in one village, a house was converted to a private children's home and they've got an application in to expand that. My understanding is the children and young people are actually coming from outside of Lincolnshire. Now, obviously, Ofsted are involved in, I'm guessing Ofsted are involved in doing the sort of investigation, visiting there to sort of check on standards. But it does concern me that potentially, you know, the standard of care that is being provided there is not going to be this well, it may be very good, but the concern's always there that, you know, it mightn't be as good as what we offer. Is there a role for us? I mean, if somebody decides to set up an independent children's home in Lincolnshire, have they got any obligation to let us know or do we just find out by accident? I'm just wondering because I do have concerns about this. And I know Ofsted do the inspection, but it just seems to me as if it's not quite as well-regulated as our own internal provision is. Thanks.
I'll take this one, Chair. So anybody can apply to set up a children's home in any part of the county. But it is still very heavily regulated. Same regulations apply whether it's a private home, whether it's a children's home. So they still have to have the independent, the Reg 44 visitor and they still go in every month and they still send reports to Ofsted. What we did a few years ago, when I was, as part of managing the Laddo service, we were conscious that there were a number of private children's homes who Ofsted intervened with and were either suspended or closed down. So we've worked with the LSCP and Ofsted and we have now got a process that the district councils have also signed up to, that if somebody makes an application, the council are notified. So for example, we wouldn't necessarily want a children's home next to another, one of our children's homes or in an area where we know from the police that there's, you know, quite a lot of young people and a high number of antisocial behaviour issues. So we do have a say or some influence with our district council partners around that. We do get notified every month, the council do and the Laddos do, about which children's homes, where they are, how many they're registered for, how many children should be in there. And if there are any concerns that directly involve the children and it's an allegation about a member of staff, that would come through the Laddo service as well. So I think we're as involved as we are allowed to be under the existing legislation. You know, we reach out, we, the Laddo contacts them regularly. Every few months, we send out LSCP notices. We promote the training with them because they're able to purchase and fund the safeguarding board training. So that goes out to them. The police have a couple of members of staff who proactively go into the homes as well and introduce themselves and do sessions. So we do reach out and offer what we can offer. So yes, we do, do as much as we can do, yeah. I think that's covered it all, unless Janice has anything more you can think of.
Thanks, thanks, Karen. I think that's covered that because obviously, you know, again, potentially if anything gets seriously wrong there, the first port of call potentially is going to be us, isn't it? To actually, you know, if, say, it was flagged that an independent home was failing, I'm guessing we would have to step in at some point.
Right, can I just come back on that? So every child that will be placed in that home would obviously have, the social worker from that area would still have an independent reviewing officer from the area that placed them. Yes, some are at a distance from home, but they'd also be more than likely attending schools in our localities, accessing health services in their localities. So they, each child would still have that group of professionals around them involved with their care plan. And any of those can raise concerns at any point. They would still come through our front door in children's services. Or if they know the name of the social worker, they can go directly to that area. But there are quite a lot of quite tight procedures in place. So if there were concerns about a child, it would go to the social worker. And if it was an allegation or a concern around the care that the home was affording, that would also come through to Lincolnshire Laddo because we've got a responsibility for all children and homes in our area, well, any professional working or volunteer working in our area. So I think you can be assured that we would be notified and it would be addressed, yeah, thank you.
I've just got a quick question, it's more of like a request really, I suppose. I used to have a go and look round, visit North Home. It's not actually in my division, but I used to live very, very close to it. And I was wondering whether it would be possible for me to have the, to be sent the Reg 44 and the county councillors' form that they write on it. And I wasn't sure whether the other councillors, where they've got one of the children's homes in their actual division, would they like that information as well, basically?
Okay, yeah, I think that, is that still, is still happening, isn't it? That councillors are linked to children's homes and go and visit and do the report? So I'll link up with Kiara then about making sure they're getting through to your
If I could, the training is 26th of November and 2nd of December. And yes, there are visiting councillors, yeah, or there will be.
And on so on that, could I also ask about North Home generally? Because when I was visiting, it was always outstanding and obviously in this report, it's, I mean, good is not bad. But do you know what the reason for the drop is particularly?
Rachel Ly manages the home, so I'll hand that one over to her because she'll have the detail, or may hopefully have the details.
Hi, yeah, so North Home, I'm not sure exactly when it went to good because it was probably before my time. But they are, good is still, like you say, very good. Standards from Ofsted are very high and to get outstanding is quite an achievement. And sometimes it can be impacted around the mix of the young people. North Home are fantastic because they've actually got a house full of teenagers. So you can only imagine how challenging that might be. So they're doing very, very well, a very settled group. And like Janice alluded to earlier, the previous manager who's been established at North Home years is helping out Albion Street. We've got an interim manager in post there who's doing really, really well. So they are in a very good place. And I think sometimes it is just really difficult to get that outstanding from Ofsted because the standards are so very, very high. But we're always working towards that. We've now got a service lead across residential, Maria Cowan, who used to manage Eastgate. And so she's helping bring all the homes managers together. So we can learn, each learn from Ofsted inspections, like, you know, what is their preference? What do they like? How can we up our game in terms of the paperwork, the care plans, et cetera? So we're always striving for outstanding. We will get back there one day, but they are doing, they are in a very, very good place and all the children are really settled and happy there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to ask a question? No, that's great. I did have the pleasure yesterday of visiting the Haven Cottage Rest By Home in Boston. I was there for something else and I see it rated as outstanding, outstanding and outstanding. And I must admit, it was outstanding. The only disappointing news was that the home manager is leaving us and the deputy manager has left us. But the upside, I understand, is that we have those positions filled. But it was quite an eye-opening event. I only went as education for myself because I was in Boston, not another reason. So thank you very much. I move that we receive and approve the report and that our comments from the discussion as recorded are taken under consideration. Can I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement, please? And that is unanimous again. Thank you very much, Caroline, for both of those. I don't think you're the next one, are you?
No, handing over to Ben for that one.
Say again. Yeah, thank you. Excuse me, so we now move on to item seven. We will get stopped probably in about three minutes. Voices for Choices Update Report, this item is on page 55 to 60 of the gender pack and provides with summary and overview of activities with regard to V4C between June and October 2021 and future V4C planning and progress, including consulting with children and young people within residential settings. The report was presented by Ben Leal, practice supervisor, who is attending. And we'll take any questions at the end. Ben, yeah, about two minutes, I think, you get the thing, but.
Thank you very much, yes. So this report covers our Voices for Choices activities between June and October 2021. And just to summarise, what Voices for Choices is? It is the name of Lincolnshire Children's in Care Council. And the Care Council is made up of children and people from across the county. And the idea is that they share their views and experiences about their time in care. And they help us with developing work and giving us feedback about service improvement. So with regard to the June and October activities during this period, we focused the V4C groups on a return to face-to-face meetings with the lifting of the Covid restrictions as we've had a period of time since March 2020 where meetings were held virtually. So the young people have fed back, they wanted to return to face-to-face meetings and we've actioned that. And mostly the meetings have been held in LCC buildings and other settings where we've got risk assessments are in place. So the report details activities across the four quadrant areas. So if I refer to page 56, it gives you a summary of the Lincoln and West Lindsay area of their children in care council. And what the work that's been focused on across this period, across the groups, is that we've had the children and young people reviewing the Coming Into Care Kit, which is a kit that's provided to children when they come into care, which basically tells them all they need to know. And that was due a refresh, so the groups have currently been working on that. Going through the report, you can see the attendances across the different, different localities. And some of the work that's been going on over the, over the sort of August and September period was preparing the children and people to the big conversation meeting that was held at the end of October half term, which I'll refer to at the end of this. But the big conversation essentially brings the groups together into one meeting. Over North Castrated and South Castrated on page 58 and East Lindsay, it's pleasing to report that in East Lindsay, where we've previously had issues with attendance due to the return to face-to-face meetings, we have now got a small group established, which we hope to increase the attendance of over coming months. which we hope to, to increase the attendance of over coming months.
Okay, thank you. Ben, you're away again.
Just the second time running that I've been, this time last year I was also interrupted in the middle of a presentation. So I've got a bad look there. Okay, so I'm up to page 59 in the report, which, which summarises some of the work that V4C have been involved with previously. So we have a Soundlinks programme where Soundlinks is a local organisation which provides some music activities to the V4C groups. And that's going to be reviewed and taken forward for further sessions next year, which will be a virtual programme. And we also have a virtual quiz on a monthly basis, which, which will be continuing as well. So we will have a hybrid approach where we have a mixture of face-to-face meetings and virtual activities as well. So in terms of planning, we'll be raising, continuing to raise awareness of V4C to our Children's Services teams and visiting children and staff in the residential homes to continue to, to talk about V4C and hopefully raise awareness to increase attendance. And we've had some very positive feedback about the return to, to face-to-face meetings now as well. And it wasn't included in this report because the report deadline was before the, the big conversation activity at the end of October. But for the minutes I would like to, to raise that we held our first big conversation since March 2020, where we bring the, the four V4C groups together. We had really good attendance from the children and young people and from councillors and LCC staff. And there's some actions that we've taken away from there in terms of trying to develop a buddy system where we have some of the children and young people who are currently members of V4C, who will act as buddies or mentors for some children and young people if they need it, coming into care. So we're going to try and progress that based on the feedback from, from the children and people at the big conversations. So, so I think that covers everything from the June to October reporting period. I'm more than happy to take any questions or queries.
Councillor Whittington?
Thanks, Ben. Really good input, really enjoyed reading it. One thing that I sort of really liked when I read it was, sorry, excuse me, excuse me, was seeing that some of the groups are discussing politics, current affairs topics, climate change issues. As before we started, the chairman said, remember the two minutes silence. And, you know, part of that is remembering those who died so we can protect democracy. And it's great to see that we're encouraging our young people from when they approach, when they... I'm saying young people, they're young adults. And they make that transition, it's great to see they're encouraged to debate issues of politics and climate change, democracy, and why voting is important. So I'm really, really pleased to see that. I noticed it's just in the colour of areas at the moment, just wondering if that is something that could be extended across all four quadrants? Because I really think that that's kind of the active... It's encouraging people to be, our young people to become good citizens when they become adults. And I'm really, really pleased about that. So I really would, obviously it's just down to the young people themselves, but really great if that could be extended out to all four quadrants. Thanks, thanks, Ben.
Yeah, I'll come back on that. So the report refers to something called the Big Question, which is something we've pulled together recently. And that's like a, a single question that goes out to all four groups. So one of the, the big questions for one month was about, for example, whether the voting age should be lowered from 18 to 16. So I guess it'll be captured in some groups rather than others, depending on whether the children and people in that, in particular groups wanted to talk about it. So it, it does go out to all groups. It doesn't necessarily mean it's discussed in all groups.
Thanks, Ben.
Does anybody else wish to ask a question? No. As I previously said, I did go to the big conversation. I had the privilege of sitting with a young lady that had contributed to the, the entering care booklet. And she was quite proud of what she'd done and quite rightfully so. And I know during that event, things were raised quite openly. And I sat and watched Janice and Heather Sandy scribbling away, which is great. It's what it's about, it's getting information back to us. Thank you, thank you, Ben. So, sorry, nobody else wish to make a point? Right. The call? Sorry, Janice.
Yeah, I think probably just to add to that, that you, you know, obviously Heather and I did scribble away quite a number of things. And just to reassure you that we did, there was one issue that was raised around the whiteboards in school, if you can recall. And we've addressed that, we've, we've took that back to all the schools. So hopefully, and Heather did say that we might have a little young inspector check, check that out to make sure that the schools are compliant. So it's just so you know that when young people do raise issues with us, we do take them seriously and we do try to address them wherever we can.
Thank you, I'll feed that back to the, to the groups. Thank you very much.
That's great, thank you, Janice. Right, the Corporate Parents Panel is invited to provide comment and steer regarding V4C. I've done this bit unlike proposal. I propose that the panel receives the report and that comments from the discussion as recorded are taken under consideration in future planning and delivery of the V4C service functions. Can I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement, please? And once again, that's, that's all of us. Thank you, that is agreed. So we now move on to item eight. Thank you both. According to Performance Report for Children in Care, this report, sorry, this report on pages 61 to 82 of the Agenda Pack provides the panel with a key performance information for quarter two 2021, 2022. The report was presented by Janice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as you've described, this is the Quarter Two Performance Report for Children in Care. As you can see from the report, out of the 16 key performance indicators, 11 of them are ticked green, which I'm really pleased with. So I'm just going to report by exception because I'm sure you've all read this report in detail. Our fostering and adoption of children in care aged 10 to 16 years old that are living in a foster care placement still hasn't quite risen where we would want it to be. We are, as I described last time, overly ambitious. So we want our children to live in family environments wherever it's safe and appropriate for them to do so. I'm pleased to see that we have increased slightly on last quarter's reporting. And it is really still the legacy of the pandemic that we're facing at the moment. What we saw in the pandemic was our foster carer household shrink. And that was, you know, I've talked to you about that before and the reasons why. Carers are isolating, carers not wanting to take new children into placement. What we are seeing now is that they are becoming more confident and they are coming back online, as we would describe it. So we are seeing our capacity to place children in family environments increasing. I think that will still take us a period of time. We still need to work through all of the issues that we have faced for the pandemic. But, and you know, I'm sure Deborah could add, comment on this. And we've also made available to our carers the boosters in the same way as we did the social care staff. So again, just kind of reinforcing the message to our carers that we value you, we respect you, and you do an amazing job. So constantly seeking to support them to look after our children and young people. The next indicator that isn't performing as well as we would like is the percentage of children in care with an up-to-date dental check. Again, it is an improving picture, but not quite near where we want it to be. As you know, getting, getting a dentist before the pandemic was a challenge. Getting a dentist during the pandemic became even more impossible. But we are seeing now, what I would say, and I said this last time, is that when children have needed access to emergency dental care, they have received that. We have written out to all of the foster carers to remind them of the importance of children receiving their dental checks. And as I say, we are seeing that improve over time. And I'm confident that will continue to improve. Similarly, with our percentage of children in care with an up-to-date immunisations, again, an improving picture, but still challenges around, I think, when we met last time, I spoke to you about how far prioritising this. However, they have to, they've had, recently took on some additional responsibilities around vaccinating the general population. But they have a clear plan in place and their trajectory to get everybody back up to where they need to be is 18 months. And I suspect now it's probably a 12-month period because we'll be six months into that period of time. Our next indicator is our 16 to 17-year-old children in care who are participating in learning. That has decreased. It amounts to seven, seven young people. I know that Karen's here from the Virtual School and I know that you have identified all of those young people. And you have been working with them to access, access learning. And I believe that we will be reporting that that has been successful. Not sure, Karen, if you want to?
Oh, yes, I'm in now. Yeah, morning, everybody. Karen Barantia, head of the Virtual School. Yeah, this particular data point is a, is a challenging one for a number of reasons, particularly because the colleges are not necessarily geared up at that point in, in August and September to report back to our performance team on who actually is in college at that particular point in time. They kind of build up as you go through the term because they're reporting back into the DFA as some five or six weeks after we actually collected data from them. That said, we generally do chase them up to make sure that they give us an honest, you know, understanding of how many young people are actually attending the colleges. This year, that chasing up didn't seem to have the impact that we had desired. It was delayed. I think some of that is indirectly related to Covid. And some of our young people did test positive, for instance, on the cusp of, of attending college. There was also some issues around some of our, some of our young people with other issues, health issues, not directly related to Covid. So as a consequence of all of those three things, that data point was, was somewhere below where our performance indicator generally is. But I'm glad to say that we are back on track now at this point in time.
Thank you, Karen. And then lastly, our young people, our care leavers who are on education, employment or training. As we're very well aware, the impact of the pandemic on all young people has had a massive impact. And for our young people, that impact will be even more of a disadvantage. We are very alive to some of the challenges that our care leavers probably experience that the general population don't. And we have recently undertaken a survey that has looked at what are the main barriers to our young people accessing education, employment and training? And it obviously hasn't come as any surprise, but it is predominantly around their poor mental health. So anxiety and depression, which obviously will have been exacerbated throughout the pandemic. As a response to that, we have recently appointed a mental health worker to sit with Barnardo's. And as I told you last time, we've appointed to education, employment, training additional officers so that we can work very closely with the young people that are most at risk and look at how we can support them to improve their mental health and emotional wellbeing and then access education, employment and training. This is, this is a long haul process. This is not something that we will turn the cove overnight. These children and young people have experienced quite significant adverse childhood experiences, which will take us a while to work through with them. But I'm very pleased to say that, you know, we have put additional support into Barnardo's so that we can address this and hopefully support our young people into education, employment and training. I think if you read the report, you'll see that Andy Morris, the Corporate Parent Manager, he's very live to this. And he works very closely with Barnardo's. And I'm fairly confident that if Barnardo's, if Lisa Adams was here today, she could sit and tell you each and every one of the young people that this relates, refers to. Happy to take questions.
Councillor Whittington?
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much, Dee Janice, and thanks very much. I won't speak about the issues you've got, you've got around getting you foster parents because I think they've been well discussing both here and also at children's scrutiny. But in terms of children and dental checks, yesterday at Health Scrutiny and councillor Matthews was there as well yesterday, we had a report from the local NHS on the dentistry service in Lincolnshire. And it was quite a depressing report really because there did seem to be an awful lot of, of people who have been struggling to source an NHS dental care. And it seemed to be certain areas in the Austin area and also on the east coast. And of course, they tend to be areas of fairly high social deprivation. There just seem to be sort of fewer and fewer NHS dental practices. And I believe that the councillor Matthews raised the, the point that in Mabel Thorpe, you have to, I think the nearest dentist is 10, nine or 10 miles away. So that's got to be a real, sorry, excuse me, a real challenge. And I'm just wondering, you know, if, if our children in care can't be registered with an, with an NHS dentist and have to be registered with a private dentist, obviously with the care being more expensive, would that financial liability rest with the foster parents? Or would we have some ability to sort of help out around the cost side of things on that one? And then I've got a second question, which is, I've forgotten, I've forgotten what it was. Oh, yes, yes, it was, it was around children not in education or training. Because I'm very much aware, having, having sort of firsthand experience of this, that quite often children who've been in fosters or adopters or been in care, they don't necessarily are ready for, for college or for education at 18. And in some cases, you know, I've known from the extended sibling group of my own son, that's been in their early twenties where they finally, that they start to begin to address some of the issues. You know, they don't fully address them. And I expect children who've been in care, who suffered abuse, whether it's been neglect or physical abuse or sexual abuse, then they're probably never really going to fully recover, you know, even, even as adults. And there will be things that come along. But I'm just wondering that, have we got any way of picking up the stats for those of our care leavers who may not necessarily go into college at 18 or university at 18? But at 21, 22, 23, having worked through some of the problems, then go back into training or education? Because I think that applying the same criteria to those that we may apply to children and young people who've been in, you know, who've been with their birth families, you know, it's potentially a slight unfair comparison. Thanks, Mr. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Whittington. Yeah, you raised a really, really good point about dental checks. And what I would say is, at this point in time, we would not expect foster carers to bear the cost of any private dental care. It isn't a policy that we've kind of implemented at this point in time. We are still working with carers to support them to register young children and young people with NHS provision. If there were challenges around, obviously it's a very rural county, as you know, if there were challenges around actually getting young people to a practice, then that would be something that we would easily resolve. But I think you've certainly given me food for thought and maybe something Deborah and I need to take away and think about. At what point would we say if a young person isn't getting an NHS dentist and they're not getting their annual health check, which should be six months, shouldn't it? Would we, as a local authority, want to support them financially to access private treatment? So thank you for that. I'll, I'll take that away and we'll, we'll do a bit more work around that issue.
Janice, I think Polly wanted to say something in relation to that. Um, Janice, I think, um, Polly wanted to say something in relation to that.
I can hear my mic on. Hi, Polly Coombs, Foster Care. I just want to say, and I'm practical doing this on day to day, that if foster carers have even got dentists, the dentists are still behind after the pandemic. And, you know, we've had to beg dentists to see our children to, and get them in, but, you know, so it's still challenging, even if you've got a dentist at the moment, to get those regular checkups.
Thank you, Polly. Um, and with regards to your second question, um, I have to say, I honestly don't know the answer. Um, but I know a man who does, um, and that would be Andy Morris. So I will, if you don't mind, I will take this, I'll give Andy this task to, um, I could say, po- up to twenty-one, I think we would know. Um, because the Leaving Care Services actively engaged with, um, young people up to that point in time. Post-twenty-one, um, I'd need to ask Andy and Bernardo's to do a piece of work on that. So I'll take that away.
Janice, Karen would like to come in.
Oh, Karen might know the answer.
Yeah. Janice, we, we struggle getting, um, outcomes from, from, um, universities, et cetera, for, for our care leavers. Basically, around G D P R issues as much as anything else. So, um, in terms of D F E report, and a lot of it is consistent up to eighteen. Once you go past eighteen, um, our performance team, for instance, don't collect that data. It's just not, you know, it's, it's resource intensive. So consequently, there's a resourcing issue as well as a fact that there's a G T P, G D P R issue. So it is complex, it's difficult. It's not something that we can just download very, very easily. For instance, chasing outcomes for our youngsters at university, basically, we have to phone them personally and ask the question as to what qualifications they've got. So it, it is very labour-intensive.
Councillor Hague? Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, on page sixty-five, the criteria where we haven't met, um, where we've not achieved the level that we've wanted to. Although, do we know if those figures are represented in the wider, uh, public field that, or that children generally are having difficulty reaching those levels? And in actual fact, what we've received, what we've achieved as percentages uh, only more or less mirror, um, conventional families. Thank you.
Thought I'd switched it on. Apologies. Thank you councillor. I think the rhetoric would suggest that all local authorities are experiencing similar challenges to us. Um, in terms of benchmarking, the data will be published, the nine, the first nine oh three, as it's called, which is the D F E reporting, will be published this month, towards the end of November. Um, and then we will be able to kind of benchmark with the local authorities and just check out where we are. I would like to say, historically, we have always performed exceptionally well compared to, um, what we call stat neighbours in all England. Um, and looking at some of these figures, obviously, we're still performing exceptionally well. But where we are experiencing the challenges, it will be interesting to compare that with the, um, other local authorities. So I think we could probably give you a more informed position after the release of the date nine oh three.
Councillor Matthews.
Thank you for a good report. Um, I, I want, I, I can basically invite you, Chair, on behalf of the scrutiny panel, to write to the commissioning agent for dentistry on behalf of Lincolnshire County Council as corporate parents of children who are not receiving dental treatment. It is shocking. It was shocking in the Health Scrutiny Committee yesterday to learn of the figures. Uh, we, in Boston, for instance, we're way, way above the national average. It is awful. Uh, and I, I felt, um, that, that we need to be proactive here as parents to, to write in the parent role to those commissioning agencies. Apparently, it's just shifting from some dental agency to the C C G shortly. But I would like us to, to mark that, if you wouldn't mind. I, I clearly, I'd like the committee to agree with me, but, um, I, I'm inviting you to check that that's the case. Secondly, on the, um, on, on, on the access to education, I'm unbelievably disappointed with this. Uh, that one in two children on the whole and, and not, we, we can't be sure that they're engaged in learning and that as care leavers, we can't be sure they're engaged in employment, education and, and training. And as one of the largest employers and education providers, an outstanding practitioner, there must be a way that we can look at this and come up with a Lincolnshire solution for our Lincolnshire children. And I take all the arguments, it's long-term mental attitudes and behaviours, they've been damaged by the system, it's difficult, we've had COVID. We're all up against it. Um, Andrew Morris is going to bring us a report with, with some suggestions. But again, I, I would like us to, to revisit this, please. I'd like the committee to ask our agencies to revisit this and redouble their efforts because, um, it grieves me to say, to quote Tony Blair, but education, education, education. And standing still is going backwards. So we have got to redouble our efforts in this field. As parents, we owe it to our children to have an opportunity out of their difficult backgrounds. And education provides the absolutely best way for, for that to, to happen. So I'm sorry, that's very serious.
Karen would like to speak if that's okay.
Just in terms of, um, those sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, I'd just like to ensure, uh, or sorry, assure the committee that we do know where all these young people are. Um, we, um, regularly have contact with them, whether they're in school or not, whether they're attending college or not. Um, the, the, the data reflects a particular point in the year, which is basically the last week in August and the first week in September, which is not an ideal point in time for us to actually collect that data for all sorts of reasons. Um, our young people have finished statutory education and may have moved around the county. For instance, that's one of the reasons why the data at that particular point is where it is. Um, generally, by the time we get through October, November, we're up into the nineties, which is a much more positive picture, obviously. Um, and we will support our young people regardless of what issues they have. We will look to find an appropriate educational placement for those throughout their career up to age eighteen within the virtual school. Um, I will accept that we do have some real challenges. Um, one reason particularly, uh, I can, I can, I can identify is the fact that, for instance, the virtual school has not been able to, um, allocate funding to our youngsters post-sixteen up to this point. Because pupil premium for, for, for looked after youngsters, children in care, has only covered up to age sixteen. Um, again, by means of a reassurance, um, we have as a virtual school and as a children's services, looked at the D F E to join the pilot, uh, which is running up to March, which actually allocates pupil premium to sixteen and seventeen-year-olds going forward from here. Um, and we're hoping that that will begin to have an outcome or an impact on, on providing better provision for those young people and actually enhancing the transitions between the virtual school and Leaving Care. So there are a number of things that are happening at this point in time to try and enhance our provision for those sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. But I would like to just go back to reassure, we do know where these young people are and we are working to support them to get back into education.
Thank, thank you, Karen.
Sorry, I was, I'm just following the data as it appears on this screen, and it doesn't look very good. Now, perhaps we should move the goalposts for this quarter. If that is the case, perhaps we should be reporting on different things. But there are sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, we know where they are. When they become care leavers, we've got that shocking engagement of one in two in employment, education, training. So something is happening at sixteen, seventeen, eighteen that is shaping their futures for the rest of their lives. And we're bad there. And I'm just inviting us to go back and have a look again. Um, if it involves, you know, changing the targets for this quarter, I get what you're saying. But actually, we've got a problem, is what I'm actually flagging up.
Councillor Whittington wanted to ask a question as well.
Could I, could I respond before we take another? Before we take another question, if that's all right. Thank you very much. Um, thank you councillor Matthews. Um, I think if, if the Chair was happy to accept your first proposal, I'm happy to draft something on your behalf, if that was agreeable.
Uh, just, if I just might then, I, I know that the MP for Sleaford and North Highcombe has done a piece of work on dentistry within Lincolnshire. Um, I, I've not read the full report, but I think it has been took back to the House of Commons. Um, but, but she has done some work, but yes, that's not a problem. Happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and absolutely, I totally, you know, I, I totally accept your reflections. It is, you know, it is shocking. It's disappointing. It's not what we'd want for our own children. It's certainly something that we constantly challenge ourselves over. Um, and I welcome, I welcome your challenge back to us. Um, and I particularly welcome your thinking around actually what, what can we all be doing collectively? You know, we are a massive organisation. And I know that's, you know, that's a drum roll that Andrew, Andy beats all the time. You know, we are a massive organisation. We've got links with partners that are incredible. And yet somehow we just don't seem to be able to kind of tap into those resources. So, pardon? For our own children. Um, I do think the message is getting out there. I, um, you know, um, I think that, you know, as, as the Chair described, there was good attendance by elected members. So that, that's a real strength. But this, this work is not over and, you know, we've got a lot more to do. So I appreciate your challenge and I appreciate your support, councillor Matthews. I would just say that Andy is looking at the Care Leavers Covenant, which is again about galvanising all of those resources that we have collectively and how we might employ them differently. So at some point in the future, you will be, you will be getting a paper on that and about what that looks like and what it hopes to achieve.
So, thank you. Um, I, I think, um, if we look at page seventy-nine of the report, it, it does back out, back up, not back out, back up what Karen has said, where you can see the run of percentages rising and, and, and falling. Um, yeah.
Councillor Whittington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for allowing me to come back. All I was, I raised my hand for was to second councillor Matthews' proposal that we write to the NHS about the dentistry. Um, I, at the moment, I believe it's being commissioned by NHS East Midlands, um, on a regional basis. The details are in the report for the winter health screening yesterday. The lady is Carol Pitcher, who's the senior commissioning manager there. So a bit of details are on the report. I understand from the report yesterday is that from the first of April twenty twenty-three, the commissioning will be done by Lincolnshire C C G. But from the first of April twenty twenty-two, there's going to be a one-year transition period. So I'm just wondering if as well as writing to NHS England Commissioners, might be an idea to send the same letter to Lincolnshire C C G as well, because they'll be obviously picking up the commission arrangements on the first of April next year for that initial transitional year before then taking it on fully the year after. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Great. Anybody else wish to make a comment or ask a question? Oh, great. Thank you. Um, the panel was invited to consider and comment on the performance information contained in the report and recommend any actions or changes to the executive council of children's services, community safety and procurement. I propose that the panel receives the report and that the comments from, um, from the discussion are recorded and passed on to the executive councillor. And that, um, th- the action proposed by councillor Matthews of, of getting a letter out um, and the, the follow-up by councillor Whittington has happened and support with that would be great. Um, can I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement? Yeah, okay, that, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Then, then that is agreed. Um, thank you, Janice, for doing that part of the report. Um, item nine, fostering quarterly performance report, quarter two. Um, this report on pages eighty-three to ninety-eight of the agenda pack sets out the performance of the fostering service for quarter two. Uh, this item will be presented by Deborah Crawford. Welcome, Deborah. Head of Service Fostering and Adoption, who is with us? We'll also take any questions later.
Thank you very much, councillor Rowe. Um, this report covers the period from July to September twenty twenty-one. And as councillor Rowe alluded to, um, earlier on about his attendance at the Foster Carers Annual Conference, it wasn't until, um, October, actually. Um, but it was a fantastic event. And I want to start by just, um, making or paying tribute really to all those foster carers that attended and received, um, well-deserved and much-deserved, um, awards. And also the general acknowledgement of the, um, of the appreciation that we have as a council, um, to all our foster carer households. Um, so forgive me for stepping forward, um, by a few weeks, but I thought it was opportune, given that you mentioned it, councillor Rowe, to, um, echo your sentiment about what a fabulous event, um, that it was. Um, this second quarter of, um, the year has, um, continued to be compounded by the aftermath and the ongoing effects of, um, COVID nineteen. And I'm very pleased to say that, um, with the rollout of the, um, COVID booster vaccination, which has been taken up very well up to now, um, I think that has given a, an increased confidence um, to fostering households, um, who, I have to say, throughout this whole episode have been just fantastic, really. Um, I think that the reality is for some of our children has been that there has been a, um, limited number or, or a more limited number of beds. But I'm pleased to say that within quarter two, um, we have shifted from, um, having one hundred and thirty-three beds unavailable down to ninety-six. And I cannot tell you what that small figure means for children being able to stay local and remain within county. I think there are some good news stories within, um, um, quarter two. Um, despite the fact that the number of children in care has continued to rise to six hundred and eighty-eight at the point of this report being written. Um, we have had just a small increase in the number of children that are placed with the independent sector. And, um, I'm pleased to say that the vast majority of those children have been accommodated with local care as supporting local children. Um, the, as detailed, um, the placement stability figures, um, have, have remained, um, good. And we have still got a seventy-three percent, um, of children remaining in, in their placements, um, for at least two and a half years. So there are some good news, um, good news sort of highlights, so to speak. Um, what continues to be effective is the level of support, the level of contact, the level of commitment that the service, um, including our, um, caring to learn approach has given to foster carer households and fostering families. We have continued to, um, see people face to face. We have continued with our online community. And the feedback has been really positive about both aspects. Um, our endeavours, um, in accordance with the, the kind of legal requirements, but also a good practice guidance, is that we continue to see, see foster carers direct and also other children living in their household, including their own, um, birth children and those staying on a stay and put arrangement, which is a provision for post-eighteens. Um, we've engaged very much this quarter as well within the transformational work that is, um, ongoing. And we've got our continued strong focus about what is it we offer in Lincolnshire County Council that you wouldn't necessarily get in the private sector? And I think that it's been pleasing, um, to note that we have, our recruitment has kind of levelled off, really. Levelled off in a good way. Um, I think we've had in the first quarter, a number of people who have taken, um, time to reflect and consider because of COVID or because of their life changes, that they want to do something different. And some of those, um, inquiries that we've had from the general public have not been suitable or appropriate. Um, whereas I think we've now bucked in the trend again, that it's people who are contacting us, want to foster Lincolnshire children. So I'm really pleased with that. Um, our online presence within the recruitment, um, has been, um, as continued. We've got an event forthcoming in the next couple of weeks. But you'll see within the report, um, we remain very much in the marketplace. We remain very proactive and very visible to people that are interested in wanting to foster children. Um, we've had, um, three foster carer approvals this quarter. Um, which is good. And we have a number of assessments that are, um, ongoing. If I just remind people that the, the government guidance for, um, assessment is that you, you have up to eight months to complete a foster car assessment. We absolutely, our ambition is much less than that. But just to say to you that that sometimes can, it, it almost suggests that, that's not But just to say to you that that sometimes can, it almost suggests that that's not many, but there's lots ongoing that are within that eight-month period. Our efforts continue to be via family network meetings and looking at keeping children within their family, as Carolyn alluded to earlier, that our work within the kinship agenda continues to be fast, it continues to be strong. And we endeavour where possible to support children being with their loved ones, whether that's their birth families, whether that's their connected persons, people that have significance to them. All of those people are thoroughly assessed, are presented to our fostering panel and in some instances ultimately their, their assessments are presented to the court. As you will appreciate during COVID, there has been some slight delays within, within the judiciary also. So I think it's fair to acknowledge that we're slowly coming out of that. But I say that with a degree of caution because it is slow. Our campaigns to add to our cohort of foster carer households remain very clear, very transparent. We are very much looking for fostering families to care for sibling groups, to offer permanence, but also to offer opportunities for parents and children to be assessed together within a foster car placement. Sometimes that can be, the requests for those can be like buses, if I might say that. You, you get, you know, you get a few and then you don't, you don't get some for a while. However, there is an unpredictability within our business and we have to be prepared for all eventualities. Because not only is it right for parents and children in Lincolnshire, but it has a massive financial impact for the county council if we're sending people out of our kind of jurisdiction. Just to capture, I suppose, what I would say finally is that our efforts in terms of recruitment, stability of our foster carer presence, support to foster carers, I think have been relatively static during this period. We endeavour to continue to find longer-term homes for those children that have got a care plan for being in care. We have concentrated on, in this period, looking at accommodation for six children, a sibling group of three and a sibling group of two and, and one single child. And I'm pleased to say that despite the challenges that we have with recruiting permanent carers to go into permanent straight away, it is a continued sense of satisfaction when foster carers who have taken children on a short-term basis then are able and choose to have those children as part of their forever family, if you like. And I, I suppose, you probably can sense from a little bit of hesitation in my voice that it, it, every day, it's astounding what people do really. And having worked in the fostering service for as long as I have, you know, I, I can't, I think if this, if this period with regards to COVID and the, and the aftermath and the recovery that's taken place says anything, it says what those, how good those people are. Good probably doesn't describe it, but I'm just a bit struck for words. So what I, what I would say in summary is that we're not out of the woods. Business as usual, out there seeing people, being in contact with people, listening to people, you know, is, is, is kind of at the heart of what we have to continue, continue with really. But I would just say tribute to all the staff as well that I think, you know, we are steadfast in trying to keep our foster carer community happy, make sure our children are well cared for and strive for better things always. So it's, it's been a good quarter, but I, I do say with a degree of caution that, you know, we're, we're still not out of the woods from the, from the pandemic. But I'm happy to take any questions.
Councillor Whittington?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and Deborah, thanks, thanks, thanks for your report. And it's really, it's really good to see, as, as you said towards, towards the end, that we're not out of the woods yet, but we're, we're, we're improving and that's good. Because obviously, obviously, obviously COVID obviously had a real big impact. I'm just wondering, Mr. Chairman, have, has anybody written to our foster parents thanking them for the great work they did during COVID? And if we haven't, I, I know you've committed to writing one letter today, Mr. Chairman, would you be prepared to write another letter on behalf of the panel to thank all of our foster parents for their outstanding work during the pandemic? I, I have got a question, but I'll, I'll, I'll pause for a moment, thank you.
No, but more than happy to. Again, part of the event was, I did get a chance to just say thank you to, to everybody. It, it was probably the biggest virtual event I've been to. I think we topped ninety attendees at one stage. But yes, again, more than, more than happy to do that. Thank you.
Councillor Rowe, please may I just comment in response to councillor Whittington? Quite early on in the pandemic, and I could see Polly and Anne both nodding, thank you for your confirmation. But quite early on in the pandemic, I would say in the middle and towards the end and more recently, and the service, not only by, from, in terms of Heather Sandy, Janice Spencer, John Harris, my predecessor and myself, we have made contact with all of the foster carer households to convey our gratitude and I hope our appreciation and respect, also respect for these people. So, yeah, we, that has been done on a regular basis.
Thanks, Deborah, I think, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's really great and I think that, but yeah, I think, I think if we rise to panels, to call parents as well and say thanks, I think they're going to be really, really useful. My question-
Mark, could I just, if I might, I think Polly just wanted to come in.
Yeah, I just wanted to say personally as a foster carer, the support during the pandemic was upped. And, you know, we felt very, very well supported. So, yeah, you know, and it just really helped in a very interesting time, so.
Thank you, Mark, Carol.
Thanks, Paul. My question was about speeding up the time for assessing new applicants. Because I know, again, going back eighteen years when we went, me and my wife went through the adoption process, which is very, very similar, I guess. But because all through during that process, what we really wanted was it to, you know, to happen as quick as possible. And while I appreciate obviously you've got to do all the checks to make sure that you, you are getting the right sort of people in there. When you're in that sort of process of being assessed, you just want the process to be completed because, you know, you've committed yourself to doing this. And I, I, it's great that we are looking around that. And you refer to the fact that government sort of view is this process should take a month. And I, I know obviously we have to be really, really sure, but I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do locally just to kind of, whilst still making sure that we don't cut any corners, just to kind of, because, you know, because, as I say, we, we're in the process, what you want to do is to have, is to be passed and approved and then to move on to the next stage. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
May I offer you some reassurance that the government timescales were from twenty thirteen? And so we've been, we've been working within those kind of parameters for a considerable number of years. I can assure you that, that in most instances it is less than eight months. I think one of the critical factors for anybody going through an assessment, and I, and I haven't been through an assessment of this, of this type, and you're absolutely right, the depth of, of, of information analysis, the triangulation of information is absolutely critical because it's about the right people, you know, caring for vulnerable children. But I can assure you that we, we stop at no, we want to do it, we want to do it as efficiently as possible. And I think the most critical factor within any assessment process is taking people with you. And I think that people who are committed to going through this process want us to get it right. And I think keeping them informed, and I hope your experience was, was similar, was that, you know, having those communications and explanations of why we're waiting for DBS checks or health checks back is quite crucial. So I'm reassured that we, we, you know, we are within the eight months. And actually, we take people with us in terms of the process, if that offers you some assurance.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Deborah. I mean, I, I think, I remember back to one of our, our, when we go through the process, the, the day the social worker is booked to come in to do the home assessment, at that time, our, our entire kitchen was being extended and replaced. So unfortunately they came into a building site in the kitchen. So straight away, they had to then come back when, when it was completed. And that sort of extended the process because it just, unfortunately, it was one of those, one of those things that extended the process a bit longer. So they could come back and actually say, yes, there is a proper working kitchen. But the day they came, there wasn't because the builders were in. Thanks.
Councillor Matthews?
Yes, can we send them all a Christmas card instead of a letter? And can you, Chair, as Chair of this committee, write a Christmas card in your own handwriting to the people that were nominated as doing the brilliant work? Because actually we need to thank the thankers. So well done, thank you very much.
Okay, just really a question for myself about, about the advertising. I sit and read, we do an information event, we have adverts running, we have Facebook and several other things. My question is, is from my marketing background, do we actually register where the inquiries come back from? Are we assessing the quality of, of that work? Or are we just putting it out there, assuming it's working?
No, as part of our strategy, we are very clear about quality assuring, but also getting our feedback to know what we need to do better or the same or differently next time. So we know because we, we actually trace where our inquiries come from, what has been successful and what has been, and what we perhaps need to do differently for next time. So I suppose it's like an evolution really. We do keep checking and we do keep monitoring. But we know that from, I guess, over a period of about the last five years, that our online presence is absolutely critical.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. So the panel is invited to accept this report as an accurate overview of the fostering service. I move that we approve the report and that comments from the discussions are noted. And can I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement, please? Yeah, again, that's, thank you, then, then that is agreed. So item ten is the Private Fostering Annual Report and Statement of Purpose. This item on pages ninety-nine to one-twenty-six of the agenda pack informs the panel about the work of the broader children's and fostering service in relation to private fostering. And Deborah, again, please.
Thank you, councillor Rowe. Okay, so this is my first year of presenting the Private Fostering Annual Report and Statement of Purpose. Private fostering, I, I, and I hope has been demonstrated within the report, has kind of largely been influenced by the Lehman Report in two thousand and three. And I'm sure that everybody would recognise the name of Victoria Colimbea and the context of her tragic circumstances is kind of what strengthened the vigilance around private fostering, which sits under section four of the Children Act two thousand and four. Private fostering is as defined in, within the introduction. And one of the things that we are very vigilant about is always ensuring that what constitutes a private fostering arrangement is in, is in fact that. Because within the law, there are, there are some, it's about the nature of the relationship the child has in terms of their, their bloodline, if, if, if I can use that, that term. So we're always keen to ensure that the right children that we've got recorded as privately fostered are indeed that legally. The Statement of Purpose essentially underpins our responsibilities as an organisation and as an overseer of privately fostered arrangements. I think one of the things since two thousand and three, which is, I hadn't, I was surprised because it didn't feel that such that long time ago, is that we remain very vigilant to those children who are in those situations or they become private fostering arrangements. And the need to ensure that the local authority, children's services, assess and ensure that the placement for the child is legally right and suitable. But most importantly, that those carers that are identified as private foster carers are duly assessed, not only by a child's social worker, but also by a fostering social worker. So effectively, you've got two parts of an assessment coming together that is then authorised by a fostering team manager to say, and the welfare checklist, that it's actually in the child's best interests that that is, is assessed and, and signed off as a private fostering arrangement. Just for clarity, it is, it is different to what I've been sat talking about with foster carers. There is a, there is a noticeable legal difference between the definition of a private foster carer and those that are assessed by Lincolnshire County Council to care for other people's children more generically. What I think one of the challenges has been, and I say not just for Lincolnshire but across the country, following the Lehman Report in two thousand and three, was about the business of the local authority to ensure through their local safeguarding board partnerships that the issue of private fostering is very much on the agenda of everybody in terms of sometimes the public don't know what they need to know or what they need to do with information or their circumstances. So we do ensure that as part of our safeguarding partnership in Lincolnshire, that we, and, you know, we look to promote what is private fostering, what should I do if I think I've got a private fostering arrangement? And actually, what are my responsibilities? So there's ownership by public authorities, but also it's about advertisement to ensure that people notify us when those arrangements are coming to being. Part of what we do when we have the notification is around our quality assurance mechanism as well as our assessment mechanism. So for example, we are very clear about the number of private fostering arrangements that we've been notified in the last year, which was twenty. In each and every instance, once the assessment's been completed about the suitability of that private fostering arrangement, there are regular visits and regular monitoring visits. And just to offer you some reassurance that as part of the standard checks for any private fostering assessment, we always check with disclosure and barring service to make sure that those people criminally have not got any convictions that prohibit them from caring for children and that they are, together with the assessment, that they are deemed as suitable, suitable people. I think it's fair to say that we are very clear about how often children have been visited, when they've been seen and use the, the private fostering national minimum standards to help us undertake our work, but also prescribe to us really what we need to be doing. And they are detailed within the Statement of Purpose. I think it's fair to say that social workers in, in our county are familiar with what is expected of them when a private foster, fostering arrangement comes into being. And because it has been, you know, an evolution since two thousand and three, it's been identified in Lincolnshire that we have an officer who happens to be the agency panel advisor, who coordinates and ensures that those visits are undertaken, that they, you know, that we're notified when they start and we're notified when any arrangement ends. So we have that, we have got a very safe QA mechanism in place. The head of service for regulated, which is myself, I am the named person. And obviously people do come to myself or the team managers if they've got any queries around in relation to the law or practices with regards to, to that. I, having been a team manager within fostering, I'm very clear alongside the children's social work side that we have that dialogue, we have that discussion before a private foster arrangement is signed off and that is recorded within our Mosaic system. So, I'm quite happy in terms of our level of scrutiny and our level of oversight of those arrangements, that we've got the right people or the right children in the right arrangements. I think you will see within the annual report that we are and do have to adhere to the national minimum standards very clearly, as outlined. And I think the largest part of our agenda as a county council, as part of the safeguarding board partnership, is about our constant need to raise awareness within our communities. And that is kind of achieved in a number of ways. We discuss it regularly at Safeguarding Partnership. We talk about it with our colleagues within schools, in health establishments, in the private sector, so that people understand what their legal requirements and duties are if they're to find themselves in that situation. I'm minded that I'm kind of duplicating in some areas. So, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have with regards to the annual report. Or would you like me to go, carry on and go through the statement of purpose as well, councillor Rowe?
Sorry, we have two people wanting to ask questions, so we'll go there first, please.
councillor Whittington?
Yes. Thank you, Deborah. In terms of a private fostering arrangement, because I know when we went through the adoption process, right at the end was, we went to court in Lincoln and the judge, it was an informal affair, in a side room, the judge was there and it got legally signed off. What's the process around a private fostering arrangement for that kind of legal sign-off? Is my first question. My second question is, obviously, if we are involved in the process, then we can monitor all that through. But I'm thinking in terms of, and I think that was part of the Victoria Colombea case, was when she came into the country with foster parents. And I'm just wondering how we, because the arrangement might have been done under a different legal jurisdiction, if you know what I mean? And how we can then be sort of aware of if that's legal? Do you know what I mean? If it's legal? Does that make sense? Thank you.
If I can respond to your first point, councillor Whittington. In terms of the private fostering arrangement, it is not in the same legal jurisdiction or it's not in the same gravity, I guess, as adoption, is what I would say, first of all. We are governed by statute. And the sign-off of the private fostering arrangement and the maintenance of that arrangement is done by the local authority. So, in terms of our notification, we have a specified time period to complete an assessment. Part of that is done, completed by the child's social worker, part of it's completed by a fostering social worker, so that we can, we know what, you know, what the child needs. Those efforts, that assessment is joined up and then the fostering team manager will have a conversation with the children's teams manager to make sure that we're duly satisfied, that all of the statutory checks have been completed, that we're convinced that it is a suitable arrangement. And the maintenance of that arrangement and the monitoring of that arrangement is completed by the child's social worker, undertaking visits in the same way as they would to a fostered child, but under a different legal statute. So, they don't go off into the yonder. We do monitor that to the point where, at the age of 16 or 18, depending on disability, that that legal arrangement would end. Your second question?
My second question was, I think it's picking up on the Victoria Colombea case, where Victoria, she came in from overseas with people who were purporting to be, well, I can't remember the exact facts, who said that they were her foster parents. And again, it's that check where it's happened overseas, how we can, first of all, be aware that that arrangement's in place and what we can then subsequently do to monitor it. And, yeah, thanks, Deborah.
Okay. If I can say, it was actually her great aunt and great aunt's partner. Yeah. So, they weren't technically legal foster carers in the same way as we commonly refer to as foster carers. But that was a private fostering arrangement. And I think the tragedy, the utter tragedy for that child and what came out of that was about the level of scrutiny, about raising people's awareness. And that very much, the Lehman Report, very much influenced what we've now got in terms of statute. So, it influenced the law and the good practice guidance and national minimum standards. We don't know what we don't know. So, we're very aware that there are communities across the county of Lincolnshire and beyond where, you know, there may be, I don't know, I can't say definitively, arrangements that should be reported, but that haven't been. But actually, what I'm saying to you is, from a county council point of view, in conjunction with the Safeguarding Children Partnership, we heavily raise awareness within Lincolnshire. And when we know that those arrangements are, you know, are in existence, we have a clear policy and a practice to ensure that those children are visible, they're heard and they're seen. And I think that, going back to 2003, Victoria wasn't seen, wasn't heard and wasn't visible. And her legacy lives on in terms of making sure that we adopt and stick to good practice.
councillor Hague?
Thank you. Deborah, on page 117, the chart has a trend that the fostering over recent years, private fostering, is going down. Is those figures or trend reflected in the council's fostering? And the other question I've got for you is that when the social worker goes to visit the family, is it a requirement that the social worker speaks to the child alone without the parents being present? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Hague. I think what, there are a number of variables to the figures as we see them. And sometimes, they can be heavily influenced or not by the passage of overseas students coming to live with their sponsor families or suchlike, if they've come over to pursue education, further education, et cetera. So, there are a number of variables. And I think the numbers of peaks and troughs within private fostering numbers is something that we're very cited on, really, because we acknowledge that where we have the notifications, we follow up on them. It sits within a, I want to say, national trend, Janice will correct me if I've got that wrong. In terms of where it correlates with fostering per se, I don't think there is a clear link. The arrangements for private fostering are those that are made between families as opposed to where the local authority intervene in making those arrangements. So, essentially, we're dealing with a little bit of the unknown, if I might say. But what I can say to you is that when we are notified, we act upon it. And I would, yeah, just kind of validate it by saying that the number of private fostering arrangements doesn't necessarily correlate with what's happening within fostering more generally. I can't be any more specific than that, really, unless I've missed anything, Janice?
No, I think that's right. They're two completely different systems. And I think, you know, Deborah's described them really well. So, private fostering is absolutely a private arrangement that a family makes, but because of the family arrangement that Victoria Colombea was living in, it was reviewed and the local authority had to become the scrutiniser of those placements to make sure those children are safeguarded. So, I suppose our responsibility to those children is more of a safeguarding nature. And our foster carers, as we know our foster carers, Polly and Anne, for example, are carers that we have supported to care for our children, that are looked after. So, these children are not looked after and these children are. So, there's no direct link, if that makes sense.
I was curious to see that if the general trend for private fostering was going down, whether the council's trend was going up because we were taking more of the slack? Or whether the numbers going, our numbers were going down as well?
Yeah. I think that they're just not. So, where you have a child that goes to live with somebody that's not a relative as defined by law, then they become private foster carers. So, if I give you an example, where we see them, and I think possibly they've reduced because what we see in Lincolnshire, sofa surfing 15-year-olds, is our traditional private fostering arrangements. Obviously, the pandemic's kind of stopped that. So, that really isn't happening as much as it would be. What I would say is, we constantly raise awareness because we are aware that these children can be extremely vulnerable. And we amended our school admissions process so that the schools know if the child is living with a person who's a private foster carer and they don't have parental responsibility. And then the schools will notify us. So, it is a small cohort, but in other parts of the country, there are quite higher pockets. London, for example, where you might have parents who go into education, go into university, and they will place their children with someone to help them, support them while they further their education. So, it varies up and down the country, doesn't it, the arrangements? And as I say, I just don't think it's helpful to call it private fostering because it confuses us, never mind.
My final question was, do we interview the child separately, separately to the foster parents being present?
Oh, it hasn't, it's come back on. Apologies, councillor Hague. Absolutely. In terms of checking the accommodation, speaking to the child, young person, what I would say is that the majority of the children that have been privately fostered this year are those that are of an age and understanding to offer their view and give their view very clearly. So, yes, they are spoken with and their accommodation is checked and the private foster carers are engaged with as a means to ensuring how that arrangement is actually going. So, we do come away from those visits having a clear sense of kind of what is going on to the best of our knowledge and ability. Yeah.
I've just got a quick, well, two questions, really. One, is it, I mean, I definitely was not aware of a private fostering arrangement before I came onto this panel at all, had no idea. I would have happily taken someone in and that would have been fine and we would have all been jolly, as in the dream world that I live in. But do you think that is a standard? I was wondering, in terms of our numbers of privately fostered people compared to the national standard, are we low because people simply do not realise they have to tell you? I was also then going to ask about the schools and whether the schools tell you, oh, actually, we've been told that so-and-so isn't living at home, they're living with X, Y, Z. Maybe that's a private foster arrangement, you need to talk to them.
If I could go with question two first. I think it's variable. Where people have innocently, or they've gone into school perhaps, to say, oh, actually, you know, little Billy's living with me, that has been picked up on and that has been referred through to us so that we know about it. I think that using the word private fostering or the term private fostering is confusing, confusing to the public. I think that's why in our campaigns and the LS CP, the partnerships campaigns, it's been about spelling it out because people don't know what they don't know. So, part of it is about educating communities, educating individual people. And I remember having been sat at the Safeguarding Partnership some years ago where, you know, it's, we have had to think visually, where do people sit? What do they do when they're sat in a doctor's waiting room or a dentist, if you can get one, or any other forum? Where we take the opportunity to educate people, to say, this is, you know, did you know that? Because some people genuinely, you know, are not in it for any gain, they didn't know. And I think they've responded well to us when we've said, actually, legally, this is what we need to do. You know, and people have not objected or resisted to that. And it's not something that we finance as a county council because that's, you know, is a private arrangement. So, I think to answer your second question, I think, yes, it does get to us. I think possibly in the last 18 months, we may have seen a decline because I don't think we've had the overseas students come as we would have had, or the parents like Janice has alluded to. And I know that we have had episodes of time where we've had children who have come from Hong Kong, China and various places to come for their education and they've gone back. And the names of those private foster carers become quite familiar. And they do it as sponsors or, you know, or their distant relatives to those children. So, I think, I think it's hard to say and to be categoric about why the numbers have definitely gone down because we don't know what private arrangements people make in the community. I think what we have to be satisfied with is that our awareness raising, our education of people is ongoing. And it has been since the law changed on the back of that absolute tragedy all those years ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else want to raise a point or ask a question? Oh, councillor Whittington?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I was just picking on the point, Deborah, you were making about, obviously, I'm guessing the, when the, the legal definition of what a family is under UK law, I'm guessing there are going to be some, in some culture in the world, their definition of a family is wider than ours. So, I'm guessing that, you know, we may think in terms of aunts, uncles, grandparents, but they may think in terms of great aunts, third or fourth cousins, as you said earlier, part of a wider family and actually probably doing something that traditionally they've always done, but not aware that the UK law is a bit different, if that makes sense. Thank you.
I think you're absolutely right, councillor Whittington. And I think, without wanting to generalise or talk about areas that I know very little about, we know that within some cultures and some communities, that it has been tradition for people in the very extended, and I mean very extended, to raise other people's children. And I think what part of our education and awareness raising is about what, you know, what British law says and what we have to practise. So, you know, and I think that falls under the umbrella of the education element, really. What I am pleased to say is that we have not been in a position where we've had to serve a prohibition notice or that we've not been satisfied. I think, you know, we never like private fostering arrangements on very young children and they are kind of looked at and considered. But I think our pushback and our challenge to those families in those instances have been reasonable and they've been accepted. People have been compliant and willing to do the right thing.
Thank you. Do you want to do part two, please?
Thank you, councillor Rowe. I think essentially, some of the discussion and conversation that we've had already this morning covers this, really. But the statement of purpose for private fostering really sets out within the county council's business, but also within regulation, what we are committed to in terms of safeguarding children and promoting the welfare of children within our community. And I think we adhere to and adopt very high standards in the sense of making sure that those arrangements are assessed and are suitable and that we act within the powers that are given to us within statute. We obviously make sure that within our We obviously make sure that within our training on development of, of staff, that they are familiar with the private fostering legislation and the guidance that kind of says what we do day to day, if you like. The, I think the importance of having the statement of purpose clearly sets out what we have to do and how we have to do it. And I think it, it illustrates what and demonstrates what our duties are under the law, what our good practice guidance looks like. And I think also is a reference point for all professionals because one of the things I would say is that whilst the responsibility for the notification, the authorisation and the maintenance of private fostering arrangements, any professional from any discipline and any member of public can bring it to our attention about a private fostering arrangement. So like much of our business, it is based on the, the, the knowledge, the goodwill and the good practice of colleagues from other disciplines across the safeguarding partnership, if you like, health, education, third sector and such like. So this statement of purpose, whilst it's a council document, it applies to all of us that are citizens, really, who may engage themselves in a private fostering arrangement. At least it, it spells out how we do things in Lincolnshire, what the expectations are, where staff and where customers, members of the public within Lincolnshire can access information through SharePoint and, and at the, the county council webpage. We, within our statement of purpose, it's how we deliver those key messages to those people that are private foster carers as well. And in that, you know, you have a legal adherence and a legal duty to care for that child to a good standard and these are the expectations that we, we have of you. So the statement of purpose essentially underpins what we do within, within the council, what our policy and what our procedure is and how we go about authorising those arrangements, really. And I suppose with, within the whole document and within what we do, it is about ensuring the welfare and safety of that child at all costs, really. And it, and it tells people how we're going to do it. Unless there are any specific questions, and I, and I'm absolutely sure that everybody's had the opportunity to reflect on this document, I'm happy to take any questions because what I don't want to do is repeat what I've said in my earlier, earlier documents. So councillor Rowe, happy, very happy to elaborate or take any further questions as you say fit.
So I think every, I think everybody's covered everything they wanted to tell me. If not, no, that's, that's great. Thank you very much, Debra. The panel is invited to accept this report as an accurate overview of the council's function in their discharge of responsibilities in terms of private fostering. I move that we endorse the report and that comments from the discussions are noted. Can I ask you to raise your hand if you're in agreement, please? And again, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, that is agreed. So we move on to item 11, the final item for the day, which is the panel work programme. This item on pages 127 to 130, the agenda pack enables the panel to comment on the content of its work programme. And that's going to be presented by Kiara.
Thank you very much, chairman. The work programme is being reviewed at each meeting of the corporate parenting panel to ensure that the contents are still relevant and will add value to the work of the council and partners. Therefore, we ask that you review the work programme today as this is being developed for the months January and March 2022 and make any amendments, highlight any additional areas for review or approve as is. Thank you.
councillor Matthews.
Yes, this, this may not be relevant in any way, but it's a sort of hark back to previous meetings. I'm interested to know how much our corporate parenting responsibility crosses over with our duty of care as Lincolnshire county council, and I'm thinking of two specific types of incident. One is, we talked about refugees who were in the county and they were children or they were youths. And there was a horrific incident in a, in a, in Boston that went through Lincolnshire, Lincoln County Court and, and a young man has gone to prison. And I don't know if we have any, as I say, duty of care as Lincolnshire county council for these young people if an incident like that happens. So it, I'd really appreciate a wider education about where our, where our boundaries stop, if you like, or if there are things we should be casting our eye over.
Thank you, Janice.
So quite happy to bring a paper because it's quite a complicated area, as you can imagine. So some of the refugees, which will be the unaccompanied asylum-seeking children, we will have responsibility for because they will have come here as unaccompanied minors and therefore we will look after them either in foster care or in supported accommodation. And they will have the same rights and entitlements as any young person that we look after in Lincolnshire. The refugees that are in the hotels at the moment, they are with their families. So we wouldn't get involved unless we needed to be involved from a support element or if there was a safeguarding concern, and there's no suggestion at this stage that there would or is. The duty of care to the young man that you've just mentioned, by definition of the offence committee, he was remanded into the care of the local authority and that was into the secure provision and therefore he became a looked, a looked-after child. And therefore he would be entitled to the same entitlements of any other young person that we looked after. However, upon sentencing, that then lapses. So he is now in, in the care of the state as a offender rather than a looked-after young person. But he, he has family and, you know, we, we can continue to support the family because clearly there are other children involved as well. So it's, you know, quite happy if you wanted us to kind of look at some different scenarios that...
On an absolute personal level, I would, but it may be that that's just councillor Matthews and nobody else is interested. But genuinely, this, when, when is, when is a young person a looked-after child with regard to, I would really appreciate some clarity on that in the future.
If it, if it's not something of interest to the, to the panel, quite happy to facilitate you meeting with the children in care team on an, you know, we're, we're happy to facilitate anybody visiting, actually.
councillor Whittington.
Yes, thank you, thank you, sir. Chair. I see that one item we've still got to schedule is the national approach to the council tax relief. And I know across Lincolnshire, various councils, I think all the councils are now offering council tax relief to our care leavers, some up to 21, some to 25. But at the corporate parenting training, Andy Morris kind of issued a challenge to all of us councillors regarding seeing if we could get free access for our care leavers to district councils leisure centres. On the back of that, I'm trying to get hold of, I've contacted the SK chief exec and I'm trying to get, I think I've, I think I've just got her support to do this. So I was just wondering if potentially other members of the panel here might approach their, their own local district councils to try and ask them if they're considering doing something similar. And maybe when we bring the report back on council tax relief, we can maybe include a section on how that's going because I certainly get, because, because the, the SK chief exec, who used to be a deputy chief exec of a council in Nottinghamshire, said they did have a similar scheme in Nottinghamshire, which was eventually supported by, by all the district councils, hence her support for this. So I think Andy's just putting together numbers for SK and then amounts. But potentially, if we can persuade a few district councils to do it, then maybe eventually all the district councils and this, and city of Lincoln will follow this, chairman, thank you.
I think possibly maybe some feedback on what is happening at the moment at a later stage would be good. I know from my point of view, having the leader of my district council as a county councillor made life easier, but it was suggested that I stayed out of it. So as I didn't get myself into trouble, I'm not quite sure that that is, is an issue. But as, as the leader of my council's dealing, oh, North Carolina Stevens dealing with it, then I'm happy to stay out. But yes, I think it's something we could at, at least get a report back on if it has, what has been achieved. Do we have anybody else want to comment on this? No?
So the corporate parenting panel is asked to agree the work programme and identify any items for future meetings. I, I take it that the other members are happy for councillor Matthews to have the information given to him directly that he's asking for. So I move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages 127 to 130 of the agenda pack and with the addition of, of a report back of how successful we are in, in getting the cared-for children access, sorry, free access to, to leisure centres. Could I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement, please? And do we, oh, yes, that's a positive, is it councillor Matthews? Yes. Thank you, then, then that is agreed. That now concludes the business of the meeting. I'd like to thank everybody for, for your contributions and your attendance, it's greatly appreciated and goodbye.